Hey, let's get this city council meeting called to order, please. Uh, this is Tuesday, February thirteenth. Start off with roll call to my left. Brian, that means you.
Brian Schwann, council member.
Caroline Hale, council member.
I'm not on, there I am.
Troy Tabor, council member.
Ben Lawrence, mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Warrington, council member.
Mike Keller, police chief.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Chad Russell, fire chief.
Jennifer McCosland, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Les Mangas, director of Public Works.
Susan Renner, city clerk.
Mark Datter, city administrator.
All right, I'm three as the invocation. See Mr. Carter, Pastor Carter from Andover United Methodist, thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you. Let us go to Lord in prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for this day. We ask that you would just bless this, this room. Bless the council members, bless everyone that is here. Dear Lord, you tell us if we're ever lacking any wisdom, all we have to do is ask, that you'll give to us generously. Dear Lord, just give to this room the wisdom that is needed to make the decisions that need to be made. I just thank you again, dear Lord, for this community, and dear Lord, that we would be the great community and that you desire for us to be. I thank you again, in Jesus' precious name, amen.
Will you stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five is the public forum. I'll remind everybody that we do have, um, a public hearing uh, for some specific actions tonight, but this is your chance to say anything, uh, you want to the council. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Well, this is a public forum we have before every meeting, and, uh, you can talk to the council or ask questions or say anything you want, within reason. Um, but if you're here for the, uh, the Herman Lafayette paving project, that is a separate item and we will have a specific public hearing when we get to that. It's towards the front of the meeting, so... Anyone like to speak? There being none, I will close the public forum and move on to acceptance of the agenda. I don't see any additional agenda items maybe on the podium this evening, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
Motion by Troy and a second by Brian to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, uh, I would like to make, uh, special note of this. Uh, we received an award from the Government Financers, Finance Officers Association. Once again, we have achieved the certificate and achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for that. I believe that's nineteen years in a row for you, thirty-eight for the city. That's, uh, that's remarkable. We'll move on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. That's items eight point one through eight point seven. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Mike, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, we have a temporary use request from Marietta Farms at sixteen hundred West U.S. fifty-four. Les.
Once again, Mr. Marietta is before us asking for a temporary use for the property at the northeast corner of U.S. fifty-four and one fifty-ninth street. This time, it's again a holiday sale for Valentine's-type novelties, flowers, candy, balloons, et cetera, starting, he asked for yesterday, through the twenty-fifth. I don't see anyone here to present his case. The staff's only concern is that this has become a habitual site for temporary uses. It was fireworks, and then it was Halloween, and then it was Christmas trees, and now it's Valentine's, and I'm getting complaints about the collection of stuff that's left behind each time we have one of these holiday temporary uses.
Does it become an issue per our code, or is it becoming an issue, uh, just from the little looks?
Both. Technically, at the expiration of the temporary use permit for each of these activities, it should be cleared back to a vacant lot, with the exception of the fence permits that have been granted. But it's become a collection of, uh, roll-off containers and equipment and...
But the way this one is written up does tell them it will go clear back to ground zero, correct? If we approve it, we're now saying...
That's what I'm suggesting, yes.
Right. And has everything else been removed now that you had concerns about?
No.
So it's, so this would be letting them know that everything previous needs to go as well?
Yes.
Do we want to make that clear, that if you want this, you're gonna need to make sure you clean up from before and clean up after this?
Absolutely clear, yes.
With all that, I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Certainly.
So, we obviously don't own this land, so if the
You do not.
landowner wanted to park a big tractor there, they have that option, and it wouldn't be against any city ordinance, is that not true?
A farm tractor?
Well, just anything, a big, I don't know, one of the, one of the storage boxes, or they can't put that on their land.
That's become the problem, that...
No, I remember, I mean, I realize that people are upset about the view of it. My question is, does our ordinance say you're the landowner, you can't put this out there?
Correct, that, that storage component is an accessory use. It has to be accessory to a principal use. There's no principal use on this property yet.
Okay, so everybody has to clean up their yard, no matter what?
Correct.
That's really what we're saying here?
Correct.
Okay.
Even under B four?
Correct.
The, the person that left the material before, they, they can't come and get the stuff to remove it?
It, it's the same owner over and over. You know, it's just become a four months out of the year temporary uses.
Have you had verbal discussions with them about it?
I have.
And no action?
The last answer I got was that their land use attorney was going to be talking to us about a amendment to the planned unit development to allow the land to be used for all of these temporary uses year-round. I haven't seen that application yet.
How long ago was that?
That was right after the first of the year, so a month-ish.
My opinion on it is that, uh, the Marietta family has been generally a good community partner, and I see no reason to deny this request, but, um, if this happens to not be cleaned up after this particular event, I think we should strongly consider denying any special use request until his land use attorney submits an application that provides for that outlet. That's my opinion. And he should probably be verbally, again, made well aware of that. I, I'll be happy to contact him as well to explain the, uh, the position of the city. There was a motion by Caroline and a second by C.R., I believe, to approve this temporary use request at sixteen hundred West U.S. fifty-four. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten. This is the item you were looking for, ma'am. All right, this time I'd like to open up a public hearing for the Lafayette-Herman project. As many of you know, um, the city is attempting to, um, institute a paving project on those streets, and I would ask if there's anybody in attendance that would like to speak. Yes, ma'am. If you could come up to the podium for us, please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Julian Hoffman, and I own the property situated at one-twenty East Lafayette, and I'm here today to express opposition to the proposed street.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you pull that microphone a little closer to you?
No.
Right, please. There you go.
I just wanted to express, um, opposition to the proposed street improvements, um, and associated special taxes due to financial hardship, and, um, it's gonna place a burden on me.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Connie Mitten, I live at fifteen-twenty eighth North Andover Road, and the roads need to be paved very badly, but this is going to, I mean, I was wanting to retire next year when I turned seventy. Now I'll have to work till I'm eighty-five. It should've been done at least twenty years ago, because them potholes have been there a long, long time, and my neighbor, one of them who is deceased now, he used to complain about it all the time and never got any results from it. So, I just, and there was a one percent sales tax passed, I think it was in twenty-fifteen, to help for road repairs. Is that being utilized? Because there is a lot in the coffers, that I understand.
That's paying fifty percent of the project cost.
And I know that we're the poor part of the city, but, uh, that can't be helped, and I've been here since nineteen eighty-one. My husband bought that house in nineteen sixty-eight, and he was here far before that, renting a little house over there someplace. But anyway, I just want you to understand that this is going to put a large burden on me also. Thank you.
Any others?
Good evening, my name is, uh, Chris Bannister, I own two-twenty through two-twenty-four Wagoneer. I'm here to speak in support of the project. Uh, I do recognize this may, um, place a financial hardship on some, but I believe that the increased property values, the approved roads, the drainage, uh, water removal, uh, curbing, uh, is, is a far bigger asset. Uh, this property's been there quite some time, and I think it's time that we bring it into, uh, the twenty-first century with the roads and the improvements. Thank you.
Can I speak to the value of the project?
I don't understand the correlation between taxes and value. Um, or at least, uh, the way I understand it is, um, there's a negative impact on value. I'm a real estate appraiser, and I'm not doing an appraisal, but I can tell you, utilizing methodology, I'm gonna make a negative adjustment for a home that doesn't have, um, specials.
Is that, is that akin or equal to an adjustment for a home on a dirt road versus a paved road?
I don't make adjustments for that. I make adjustments for the fact that there is fifteen thousand dollars associated to one house and not the other.
Any others? Once again, this is the public hearing. It's your opportunity to speak on this particular project. See none, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move the discussion up to the bench.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind if, uh, s- I just want to say a couple words about it and have the engineer describe the project really quick for the council.
Yes, absolutely, we need to.
I know people got letters describing what the cost would be. I want to be clear that these are projected costs. We don't have, obviously, we haven't done construction. Uh, we haven't gone and, uh, done the bonds, which would dictate the interest rate. These are just projections based on fifteen years at four percent, which we think is a, a decent rate right now. But, uh, you know, we think it's a, it, within a reasonable, uh, estimate. Hopefully, this project is lower than we're estimating right here, and people will pay less, uh, is, is what we're hoping for, but you can never guarantee such a thing. But I, I think a few people may have come in here and thought, this was the cost, and we're not even close to establishing the cost. In fact, we're probably two years away from this going on the tax rolls after the project is completed. We've got a, we've got a whole, uh, set of engineering we have to do on this, and then, uh, take bids. By the time you get all that done and bond counsel gets his work done, uh, spreading the specials along with Donna, we're probably at least in twenty-nine, uh, uh, twenty-nineteen, end of twenty-nineteen, if not twenty-twenty, before we, uh, put this on the tax rolls.
When would the work be done, though? Would work be done ahead of those things you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's always the way the process works, is you complete the project and you spread the cost of the project. But obviously, you could only spread the cost after you know the, uh, cost of the project.
It's temporary financing.
Right, right.
We've done that for years.
Steve, would you mind coming up and just talking a little bit about the details of the project?
Mayor and council, Steve Anderson, city engineer. Uh, just to give you a brief, uh, scope of the project, uh, and certainly as much, uh, for the benefit of the new members of the council, as well as the others. If you look at the map, uh, north is up. Andover Road is the left side of the map. The wide swath at the bottom's the turnpike, and the narrow bend is the former railroad up, uh, above this triangle that we call the Lafayette-Herman neighborhood. So that's where the project's located. Um, the streets in that area are a combination of chip seal, uh, gravel surf scene, maybe some hot mix or cold mix asphalt. There's also an old water line in this neighborhood, and we would mention in passing that that needs to be reconstructed in advance of any paving improvements. However, that's not at all part of this project's scope. ASM, uh, performed an engineering study last year, and that's what the basis of the cost is. It's nine-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars, that's the total, or the maximum amount of the project. Uh, petition was repaired, prepared by our city attorney and bond counsel in response to that. That provides for a fifty-fifty city-at-large property owner split and for an assessment method based on valuations. The urban-style improvements on this project would include curb and gutter, asphalt pavement, subgrade stabilization, storm sewers, and various other incidentals. The petition was circulated last year and was returned invalid. There was an insufficient number of signatures to allow this council to proceed with the project. And so what we're here tonight to do is to consider an alternate process, which I'll defer to the city attorney to describe. If I could make a couple of more comments on this, um, certainly, some of the longer-term members of the council understand how difficult these projects are, and there's some factors I would like to outline. It's very costly to go into a, an older neighborhood with utilities and improvements and traffic, driveways, fences, and so on. It's much more expensive to do that than to put in a new street in a subdivision like we normally do in advance of housing. Second of all, the older designs, a rectangular grid like this, are less efficient than our new, new subdivisions with cul-de-sacs where we have more lots and less streets. And lastly, these lots are very large. We're looking at new developments, three, four-hundred-thousand-dollar houses tonight at subdivision committee with smaller lots in some of these. Uh, so there's a feasibility issue I'm throwing out there for you to consider, but contra to that is the fact that the city-at-large is picking up fifty percent of the cost of this. So I'd, I'd offer that for your consideration. Uh, at this point, I'll entertain any questions, and if there are none, I'll defer to J.T. and Mark to further guide your discussion.
I noticed, uh, fourteen-thirty-two, which, um, is the USD three-eight-five property?
Yes, ma'am.
They are participating in this?
Uh, Mark, would you care to comment on that?
I... They are looking to sell that property, yes. They're, they're, that property will be assessed, but the likelihood that the school district will ever pay the tax on this special assessment, based on their plans, what they've put forth, I don't think they will ever wind up...
But the property is, okay.
Right, correct.
I've got a question or two, I just want to make sure I'm tracking. The rough estimate of the cost is nine-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars, is that approximately correct?
Rough, but it's also conservative, that's the maximum legal amount in the petition originally, and now in the resolution to initiate if you choose to. That includes engineering, uh, legal costs, temporary note interest, as well as construction, and that is conservative, because we expect the prices to come in lower than that. We can't go over that amount.
Just to be precise... I guess I'm gonna ask Mark a question. Of that amount, the city-at-large is paying fifty percent, which is a portion of the one percent sales tax that we generate.
Dedicated to streets, right.
So I'm looking at, and I really appreciate, uh, Julie, is it Hoffman? Or Huffman? Hoffman. Uh, it, this appears to me to be like a hundred-and-twenty-six dollars a month additional for fifteen years. Is that correct? And for, uh, Connie, it appears to me to be about eighty-eight dollars a month. Is that the way you understand it as well? I, I can tell you that, uh, I've been on this bench for some time, and my, my first reaction is, we need to get every street paved. I was talking about behind Terradyne Country Club, where you live, and some others, and I just can't tell you how difficult it is trying to get everybody, uh, somewhat in a cooperative mode, and rarely have we done so. Uh, and I, you know, the, I mean, your suggestion is that we should, uh, pay a hundred percent of the one percent sales tax to get this fixed. I, I don't know that that's ever gonna happen. Uh, but, uh, I'm, I am sensitive to where you're talking about. I'm also, uh, I appreciate, uh, Chris's comments about, it's, it's about time, and I wish we'd have done it twenty years ago, like you all said. Uh, hit so hard, and, uh, I'm gonna support the project, but I, I know, I wish there was some other way to, to try to get this accomplished, and, and maybe, maybe we'll figure it out along the way.
Mark?
Just want to give you a couple comments.
Can you, can you explain why the city pays fifty percent and only fifty percent?
Probably Mr. Mangas knows the policy, uh, better than I, better than I do, but I essentially, I think, quite a while ago, we decided that we would contribute, uh, to a new street, particularly based on the fact that curb and gutter and storm drainage, we feel like is our responsibility. I think we've actually crept up what we're paying a little bit from where we were previously. There was, there was a really good formula, you can add to that if...
The methodology that we've used is, we estimate what it would cost to build the street as it was in new condition, with roadside ditches and a asphalt mat or a chip seal or whatever, and credit that back as the city-at-large's portion of the project. And the property owners would then pick up the difference between the ditched street and the new curb and guttered street. It normally works out to be plus or minus fifty-fifty.
I guess I'm just telling people fifty-fifty, because I want everybody to know we're an equal partner in this, uh, with, with the homeowners, that. Think that's fair.
Why does it need to be paved?
Can you? Can you come back up to the podium and ask that question, I'm sorry? It's, uh, we want everybody to hear your question.
Why does it need to be paved? Like, when you're saying, Mr. Clark, or Clark Nel- Mr. Nelson, that every road needs to be paved, why?
And, this is just my personal opinion. Uh, i- in my opinion, we've got a very impressive, progressive city. And can you imagine today, we expand that city and we go back to dirt streets? And in the meantime, we have not brought up the older areas into a paved condition. I think, in my opinion, every street should be paved. Uh, we don't want it to be unreasonable, but I think everything should be paved and, and then we improve it as, as time goes on. And, uh, it, it's, I, in my opinion, it's progress.
Can, can I offer a couple, um, items for consideration? All of the, uh, unpaved streets, uh, in the city limits of Andover are what we call, um, legal non-conforming. It means they are basically grandfathered in the system. They do not meet the current city of Andover's, um, code, um, for streets. Uh, number two, there's a lot of dust that's created by the streets, and I'm sure you guys are, are, are well aware of that. Um, and number three, they're way more expensive to maintain than they are a paved road. So, you've got considerable costs, more cost to, to, um, keep that dirt road into a condition to only have it, um, be dusty and, and non-conforming to the city's current, uh, road standards, basically.
Well, if you're gonna talk about code, I mean, I have a neighbor who, his building is not up to code. I've complained about it several times, and all he did was put some boards up, you know, to secure the building, so I'd like to complain about one-twenty-six East Lafayette, please.
I understand.
Um, you know, because if we're gonna be up to code and we're worried about optics, that's a horrible-looking building, and it's unsafe, too, because the whole back is supposed to be removed.
I understand, you, you have to appreciate that's, uh, an entirely separate issue from the paving, but I, I get your point.
Well, it's code.
Mark, I have a question for you. There's twenty-two pieces of land, seventeen actual owners. How many of those are actually in support of this?
I believe the petition that Mr. Bannister took around the neighborhood, he got about a third of that. And then you have, I believe, a third who would call themselves neutral, such as the school, and then another third who don't want it. Susan has three other common, comments of people who object, uh, who couldn't be here tonight, so if, if I had to describe it, that's roughly the way I would describe it. Now, I'll have the city attorney in a second explain this, but please realize that these folks have the ability to protest this. It's not easy, I'm not, you know, but there is an option to say we're gonna go out and get in a, uh, valid number of signatures to stop the project. I'm not gonna say it's easy, because there's a significant amount involved in that, but there is the option, and does that have to happen in the next thirty days?
Let's, let's, let's hear your take, J.T., on this process from the start, please.
I'm happy to do that, Mr. Mayor, I just wondered if you wanted to complete public comment or if you wanted to do that in the, in the midst of the...
Public hearing is closed, I, I allowed her to ask a subsequent question.
So, to be clear, the most frequent process we have for paving residential streets is developers and/or others come to the city and they petition for the street improvement. They ask you to make the street improvement, and and certainly on all new residential developments and, and many, if not most of the paved streets in the city of Andover, they were paid for by, uh, the people who lived in those houses the first fifteen or twenty years who asked for them to be paved. That process is allowed under state law. When you receive a petition of more than, uh, fifty-one percent of the landowners and fifty-one percent of the, or fifty-one percent of the, uh, area to be assessed, and then the improvement is made by the city, and the costs, normally a hundred percent of them, are assessed back against the property owners. The statute allows for an alternative... The statute allows for an alternative method, which the city has asked me to utilize here. When a petition is not presented and a improvement is deemed necessary by the governing body, you can, uh, ask that the improvement be made without a petition, without being asked. And in this case, you then call, you, you notify everyone who would be assessed and you, you call a public hearing allowing people to address their concerns and to give you their thoughts. And then you are left to make the decision whether or not that process should be allowed to proceed. The part of the process we are in tonight is we have notified everyone of the process and that you're considering this item tonight. And they are all welcome to make their public comments. And then within a certain number of days, which I will have to get the statute out to double check, you, you are, you are then allowed to consider whether or not you're going to deem this improvement advisable. In other words, advance this process and, and, and deem the project advisable. On your agenda tonight is an advisability resolution that would deem the project advisable. You do not have to adopt that resolution tonight. Tonight, you just had to hold the public hearing. If you deem it advisable, you can, uh, continue this process tonight and say, having heard the comments, having heard the concerns or the benefits, we've deemed this project advisable and we're going to move forward. If you do that, that does in fact start a clock whereby, uh, property owners who would be assessed, who do not want this project to proceed, are allowed to circulate a protest petition that can in fact stop your decision-making process to proceed with the project. My recollection is it needs to be signed by fifty-one percent of the property owners and fifty-one percent of the property, realizing that those are not the same thing. In a, for instance, solely as an example, if, if the owner of the large parcel to the south would sign, that would be a significant portion of the area to be assessed. It would have only, only be one property owner. So you'd, you'd still, as I recall, have to hit both punch lists. If that protest petition is properly completed, properly prepared, and signed by the requisite number of owners, then the state law does not allow you to proceed with the project. After how, and I believe it is thirty days, if, uh, if after you adopt the resolution, and I am gonna know the answer, I bet, because I usually put it in my resolution. It's twenty days. And the process must be signed by both fifty-one percent or more of the resident owners of the property within the benefit district and the owners of record of more than one half of the total area. So they have twenty days, uh, to, to protest the project, at which point you are prohibited from proceeding. This is an ideal opportunity for me to point out that there is a law in the state of Kansas that is very specific about what protest petitions must contain. How they must be signed, how they must be witnessed, how they must be notarized and what their content may be. I bring that up because it is not nice for me when I get a eighty-five percent protest petition, but I have to tell you it's invalid because it wasn't witnessed on every page or it doesn't contain the language the statute requires. It, it actually makes my job, uh, far more difficult because I have to opine that it's just not a valid protest petition. So if people are gonna protest it, it is an opportunity, I think, for me to say, make sure you follow the statute, make sure you get legal help, make sure you do it properly. Because it's not nice for me when I have to say that, well, that's nice, but it's a daylight, so it's invalid. Or it's, it's, it's not got a notary on it, so it's invalid. And you can't turn them in a little bit at a time. There's specific law on protest petitions that, once you submit it, that's your petition. If you come in a day later with a different petition and say, I got one more signature, then that's a different petition under state law. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me sort of bore you with that information. But if there is no protest petition received within that twenty-day period, then you will be authorized to proceed with the project. And, uh, you would then order that the project be constructed after the passage of that time. And to complete the process through typically, although not necessarily, and Donna can correct me on this, typically you would issue temporary note financing to temporarily finance the project until it is complete. And after that time period, when the project is complete and all total final costs can be certified, including the engineering costs, the construction costs, and all costs, including the legal costs associated with the project, we then specially assess the costs of that project against the properties. In this case, the proposal is that would be assessed based on the appraised value of the property in two thousand and seventeen. This is one of the actual precise statutory methods that the state says you can assess properties based on, if you want to. There, there are some precise ways that the statute will deem okay, and this is one of those ways. Then, project's done. We know what the final costs are. We will then notify all of the properties benefiting, again, that, uh, we're getting ready to levy the special assessments. At this time, their notice will contain the exact amount of what the levy will be because it will be known, because all final costs will be known. And they'll be, uh, given an opportunity to pay it in advance if they prefer. And if they don't, uh, pay it within that payment period, which is adjustable by the city, but the prepayment period, the city usually allows is somewhere between fifteen and thirty days, sometimes more, depending on when the debt needs to be issued. If the special assessments are not prepaid, there is still a special assessment hearing where they can come and contest the special assessments. To be very precise, by the time we get to that hearing, the issue is over whether or not they were assessed properly. Because you will have made the decision to levy the special assessments and to borrow the money and to do this. And anyone who elects not to prepay their special assessments during that time period will have a special assessment levied against their property that is filed with the register of deeds and will encumber that property for the next fifteen or twenty years. In this case, I think it's recommended that, and it would be a fifteen-year financing. And it then is levied with interest at that point. If you prepay it in advance, it's prepaid without those, uh, costs and interest. But if you don't, then it is levied with interest at the city's borrowing rate because the city actually borrows the money. For lack of a better term, the city uses its credit card to go out and borrow the money tax exempt. And the costs are levied back against the property owners and included in their annual property tax payments payable in accordance with the same manner in which taxes are paid. And by that, I mean, you get your bill in December, you can pay it all or you can pay half of it and pay the other half in May. Typically, if you are a residence that has a mortgage, the mortgage company will require that you accumulate that money because the mortgage company is behind the property taxes. So they don't want them to go unpaid. And so they will typically require that you pay that money into an escrow to assure that by the time the special assessments come due, there's money there to pay it. And, and, and in most cases, the mortgage company actually pays the special assessments from an escrow that they've included in your mortgage over that time period. Which is the reason why the city normally tries to compute it as a monthly amount. Because that's how the mortgage company will collect it with their monthly principal and interest payment as opposed to at the end of the year, like people who do not have a mortgage might otherwise pay it. That is the process. And after that process, uh, the city maintains the road in perpetuity. Typically at no additional cost, which is one of the things, the one percent sales tax I'm sure is used to do, which is to maintain all the roads in the city and, and, uh, Les can correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I'm, that's.
You're correct.
Normally the circumstance. I'm sorry I took so long to describe that. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood it.
Okay. You have questions?
I do. Just a couple of quick ones. Um.
I have several, so.
Okay. This'll be fun. The four percent rate, I think, is what I saw, is in the schedule on this. Is that, um, a straight pass-through? Or do we?
Well, first of all, that's a.
Estimate.
An estimate.
They're gonna use the word estimate. I'm gonna, I'm, I don't mean this to be all, at all demeaning. I didn't provide it. It's, I call it a guess.
Okay.
You know, uh, we have no idea what interest rates will do in the public finance market between now and the time we'd actually issue this debt.
What are the last ones? Yeah, three point two to three point fours, what they've been running.
It, it's certainly in recent historical standards, that would be considered a conservative number because it would be higher than you've paid in any bondage. So they'll pay the actual cost. Yeah, they will pay the interest and the principal on half of the cost of this street, to be clear.
But the, the city doesn't like jack it up a half percent and take that. Is that correct? It's just a straight passer. I'm just trying to let everybody know.
No.
Trying to make any money on this.
No, the city, the city does charge, as I recall, an administrative fee for the processing and the requirements, uh, associated with preparing all of this and.
Yeah, that's part of the project cost.
Special assessment. And that was one of the things I referred to as a, as a cost of financing and finance cost to levy all those specials and sort of manage the levy of those over the next fifteen years. However, to be clear, it's all included right up front and the property owners pay. I mean, Donna, I think you do it to the penny.
So a second question would be.
Exactly what the principal and interest is.
A second question would be, on the fifteen-year mark, we probably chose because it's a good idea to have a shorter loan. But we can literally do whatever we want there.
No.
No.
That's a good question. Uh, the maximum you can do is twenty years under state law. So, uh, I'll, I'll let Mark address this. The, the fifteen-year is typically, as anybody who has a home mortgage knows, kind of the sweet spot for not getting higher interest rates, uh, by adding five more years to your debt. And thereby, uh, reducing the overall payments, uh, that are made as it relates to the interest mark. And, and some people will tell you, well, no, it's not. Because my mortgage lender told me it's supposed to be a thirty-year mortgage, or my mortgage lender told me I could save a lot of money if I did twenty, but, but fifteen would. The, the public finance market is different. You have to realize and remember, we're using the city's credit card, which is pretty good. Well, I, I'm actually not gonna say that. I'm gonna say the city's credit card is great, uh, as it relates to a city this size. And, uh, and because the people who purchase those bonds don't have to pay income tax on the money they receive, the city enjoys a much lower rate, obviously, at four percent or below than you would if you tried to borrow the money yourself from a bank to pave the street. So, did I answer your question?
Absolutely, yeah. Uh, following on to that, the reason I ask is, uh, if this were to, to pass, then we have to be sensitive, obviously, to the incomes of that area. And I didn't realize it was a poor area and, and I don't like that term because I grew up, you know, anyway, it doesn't matter. So, um, but if there's an opportunity for us realizing what, um, the hardships might be in that area, which I would see different than if it was in Crescent Lakes, which is where I'm at now. Then I think we should look at maybe a twenty years, a better idea. I did a calculator and, for example, the one twenty-six, sixteen a month would drop to one oh three, thirty-five roughly if the percentages were the same. And so my point is, is if it does get to that point that, that we do okay it, I think that we also should be sensitive to to reality and, uh, do everything we possibly can to make sure that we help those that are, that will be directly affected by this. And if, if you have enough money to prepay it all, you'll bypass all the percentages and it'll be a much better deal for you. And there, it sounds like there might be some people that might be able to do that, but.
Okay, I wanna correct one thing there.
Okay.
You said paying it in advance is a much better deal for you?
Yeah.
And, and that is a financial opinion, uh, because there isn't anybody, there isn't any individual that's going to be able to borrow this money at the rate at which the city's gonna borrow it. So I don't, I don't want, I, I think it's a personal decision whether or not you wanna prepay your special assessments. I don't think it's correct to say that it's a better deal for you to prepay them in advance. Because, uh, you're, you're then, just to be clear, you're then giving up the cash, which you could have.
Invested somewhere else.
For fifteen years invested.
Much better than four percent.
And we don't know what the investment rate.
By prepaying it, you're just avoiding the interest costs.
Right. And, and remember, someone may not own the house for twenty years. So if you can get off just paying five years' worth of this.
I, I, I agree. And I apologize for putting out there, I just, that was just a side, probably irrelevant point. The point was more that if it does get down to the point that we, that we move on this, I would be more for a twenty-year than a fifteen because it would bring the monthly amount down. And then outside of that kind of thing, I don't know if there's other things we can do, like tag on to other projects we're working on to try to bring costs down. That's a different discussion for a later time.
I would, I would tell you this much, a twenty-year versus a fifteen-year note, you're gonna pay higher interest for a twenty-year. So it may, it may, you may not save anything. You're just gonna extend the payment period.
At least, at least get the, the numbers, though, to see. I mean, I, I agree with you. I've seen that on my own.
You'd have to put, you'd have to put this particular bond on open market.
The payment will be lower. The, the incremental increase in interest isn't gonna be that much where it won't lower the payment because you have five more years on it. I'm confident it's, you know, whether, in fifteen to twenty bucks, sounds reasonable on that particular.
Yeah, well, twenty bucks on a hundred and twenty-six dollar bill is significant.
You, but you do wind up paying more interest over the long term on the, so, uh, either way, the comment I'd make on the fifteen versus the twenty, and I think Donna has probably no big heartburn at this point. We do twenty-year bonds all the time. My only issue with that is if you extend this to, uh, from fifteen and we go out seventeen, eighteen years, you're talking about the life cycle of the street now. And, and, and if we go twenty, then you're into twenty-two years. We do it on subdivisions with brand-new streets. It's just not my favorite idea because I think you've, you're coming close to the life of the asset that you've issued the debt for. And in this situation, I think fifteen is more, uh, beneficial to the city. But again, if twenty made the difference.
Not to mention you tie up the, the city's special assessment dollars.
Well, actually, and.
Maybe this lady's more, more correct. And let's just have all dirt streets. We won't have to worry about that. No offense.
Just because someone brought it up. The indebtedness does count in a technical statutory sense against the city's indebtedness limit. It is not exempt from the statutory indebtedness limit, uh, which is thirty percent of your total assessed value of the city. I don't wish to suggest to you that you're anywhere near your indebtedness level. That's not.
But we used to be.
That's not my point. I, I, I just want you to know, it does count. Because you're borrowing this money for this project, for these homes. It, it does count. It's just like the city using its credit card. It, it does technically count against your debt limit. So, so there is a, I mean, we're not, we're not really discussing the service of that in the context of all of this. But it does count against your debt limit.
I, I get that. I guess based on everything that, that, uh, the last couple of things that were said up here, I would say that I would be more apt to go twenty years on this type of a property where it is causing an actual hardship on people versus a brand-new build of pushing and, and allowing all the new stuff to be twenty years. And now we're gonna force a little bit, you know, fifteen years on those that really probably couldn't afford it. I don't think that's fair at all. And I wouldn't support that. I would, I would, if we're gonna move on it, I, I guess I would, I would say at least give them what we're giving the new builds. That doesn't seem fair in any way to me. But that's just my.
Mike, you have some questions?
Try to be a little quicker.
Sorry.
No, no, you're good. I live on a dirt road, gravel road, and it's, it's maintained probably four times a year. And the city does a great job on it. I wouldn't want mine paved either. Uh, it's, it's. I wouldn't want mine paved either. It's, it's, it's the part of my neighborhood is the gravel. That can't, that can't be that much cost to maintain it four times a year. And this neighborhood's smaller. There's only roughly a third of the people who want this in the neighborhood, so why are we forcing it? Yes, paved roads are great. I, I agree with Clark, you know, but this neighborhood's been here for a while. Let's, let's just keep maintaining it. And, but if we're gonna force them to have a paved road, we need to be putting up some more money. I know that when you do construction jobs and you get money from the state, that's usually an 80/20. And that's the only way that I would support this, is if we're closer to 80/20 and not 50/50.
May I make a few comments about that? I, I hate you to use the, the word "force." We're, we're not forcing anything here. We were approached by citizens in that neighborhood that one of the streets paved. And we're trying to accommodate a desire to those individuals, in all fairness, if, if, in all fairness to all parties. So we've put together numbers, we've spent the money, and we've got the preliminary engineering estimates. And this, this costs money to put together, but we didn't do this at, for no reason or just to force this down somebody's throat. We, we did this at, at a request from citizens.
And I understand that, but we're only, you know, according to what Mark and Les was saying, only a third of the people in the neighborhood are for it. So maybe we should postpone this for a little bit longer. I mean, we have the numbers, we have all the data. Maybe, you know, some years down the road, it may be appropriate.
Well, that's why we're here to consider it. Obviously, you have an opinion on it. I would expect you to, to devote appropriately. As far as the split, I think we've addressed that. I mean, it, it's using more city-at-large dollars, going up to 80% as you suggest, really isn't fair to everybody else's, that, streets that were either rehabilitated at 50% or they're paying 100% of their streets instead of using city-at-large dollars. And, and the 50% that we're using is, is a little more fair to everybody. Because the citizens at large, everybody pays that 1%. But do we treat this neighborhood any different than we treat this neighborhood? And it becomes an inequity if you use 80% or 100% of those sales tax dollars to pave this one particular neighborhood.
What's the solution? I guess I'd ask the city engineer, the public works director on, the street wears out at some point. I mean, we have to go in and do something with it at, at some point. I guess I'd like to know what those things are. But we have to do a major type maintenance to it at some point, don't we? We just can't leave it the way it is forever.
The subbase is destroyed already.
Asphalt lasts for about 15 years, and you have to repave it.
I wish it was that easy. The problem is, this, this neighborhood dates back to the 1950s. It was a gravel street that was either seal-coated or had a small lift of asphalt over the top of a gravel road. The subgrade is beyond repair. Some of the neighbors have suggested that we just fix the potholes. If you go out and have a look at the street, I would welcome anyone to tell me where to start and where to stop. It's, one pothole ties into the next, ties into the next, ties into the next. There's a subgrade failure there that is just systematic. The road is done. It needs to be either turned back to an entirely gravel surface, maintained with a motor grader, or a full-scale improvement.
And I guess Councilmember Worthington, what I suggest to you is that paying for a street is just like paying for your roof. That's all part of owning a property, and you can't avoid it. You know, it's just part of, part of your responsibility to, to maintain your properties, to maintain your street in front of you. In your situation, yes, you have a street that wouldn't need that kind of repair, although we have plenty of people complain about those streets too in town, so it's just.
Could I make a comment on the life of the street? And Mark, I'm sorry to disagree with you a little bit. I would break a, an urban street down into three different components. We generally have an underground urban storm sewer system. I would put the useful life of that at 75 to 100 years. And we know that because we can go around and see concrete underground structures that last that long. Curb and gutter, probably a little less because of the weather, 50 to 75, somewhere in there, 60, you can find curb in which tall or small towns, and dates back to the 40s. The asphalt pavement is the component that has the short lifespan. But when, I think it is a relevant factor when you get into feasibility analysis. If you look at the life of the curb and gutter components and the life of the specials, you're really getting a lot of life on the, on the concrete stuff. The asphalt or concrete, if you were to put it in between, they both have to have maintenance at different periods of time, but curb and gutter and storm sewer lasts a very long time. Thank you.
I might, I might ask Steve, are you also of the opinion that the, the subgrade is beyond repair in this area?
Well, there's a combination. I would, I've, I've seen about three different things out there. There's some areas that appear to be gravel. Maybe they've got some, some pavement under them. There are some areas that appear to be a chip seal, which is kinda like shoe polish or a coat of paint in your barn. Then there's some areas that appear to be some thickness of asphalt, whether cold mix or warm mix. So you have a hodgepodge, but I agree with Les that, that when you have those, those chip seals and paved areas, there is a trend or a practice where you return the entire street back to gravel because you can't do anything with the asphalt where it's broken up or alligatored. Subgrade usually refers to something that's under a, a structural pavement. We're basically driving on the subgrade for structural pavement. It's not strong.
Using the words that Les made, and I think what he is saying that we've repaired that so many times, we can't do it anymore. And I was wondering whether or not you concurred with that opinion, or you had your own opinion as to the useful life of the streets in that vicinity.
No, I would generally agree with that. I, I think what we're doing is attempting to make the best, best of a bad situation. And so
So it can't be properly maintained? That's his question. Currently.
Well, you, you got me in a corner. Define maintenance. I mean, with a gravel road, you, you blade it with a motor grader. If you have pavement of some kind, you have to patch potholes. We've got both. So I'd be in favor of returning it to gravel, like Les says, but it's very difficult to maintain the, the surfacing. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it's fine. Thank you.
Well, that would be what I would kinda want to know. If this doesn't get accomplished, then returning it to gravel would, sounds like it would be the better thing overall. And is that cost something that would be the city's as it would be part of our maintenance? Or is that going to?
That's a political question, but.
We would have to spend some money to hire a contractor to go in and, and mill up what asphalt is there and then put fresh gravel on top of that.
To Clark's point, we're kinda going backwards in this city if we're returning streets to gravel.
Oh, no, I know. I'm just asking the question. Here's kinda what I'm thinking. It seems to me like we're saying that there's only a third of the people that support this. But yet, we're hearing that there's some neutral people who are on the fence. And I think, having been through this kinda thing before, oftentimes the neutral people, nobody's neutral. Somebody's got an opinion somewhere, and even, either they think this is an improvement or they don't. And if we were to approve this, since we had the ones who wanted it to happen, tried to get the 51%, it sounds to me like if we approve this, if there is really 51% opposition, then they have an avenue to, to show that. So this is really tough. I, I agree. I mean, I hate to make, you know, when someone's saying, I can't afford this. But at some point in time, this group has got to come together, and I really do not believe that there isn't an opinion there by everyone that owns this.
I think you're right. I think that what you're calling neutral are people that maybe want it, but don't wanna make their neighbors angry.
Exactly.
Or they maybe, maybe don't want it, but they don't wanna make their angers maybe, angry that the ones that want it. Those are what, those are what we're calling neutrals. You and I have been through many of these projects. And there's always that quiet bunch that just doesn't wanna say nothing because they don't wanna make anybody mad, either way. So I'm of the opinion that this is a good project. We were asked to bring it. We're not forcing it. But if it happens and it passes, I do want the availability for our staff to explain or point them to the direct statute of how to properly protest this. Is that fair?
For example, do we have the forms necessary, or is that something that an attorney would need to do?
We don't have a form of protest, and there isn't, to be clear, just a simple form of protest for any protest petition. And, and I would certainly advise that if you were wanting to protest this, that you would get the assistance of an attorney in drafting that. There is one other point of information I wanna make because it was raised, and, and I, I want it to be clear. The decision of the city paying 50% is in tonight's resolution. So if, if, if you didn't like that, that's in there. So, so there would, that, that would be a decision you're making tonight. The question of how long you would levy the special assessments, however, is not decided until the special assessments are levied. So I wanted everyone to understand that that's not in there tonight. That is what I understand staff use to kinda communicate to the property owners what this might look like on a monthly basis. That's a decision you all make when you get ready to levy the special assessments. I just wanted to be clear so there was no misunderstanding on that.
Well, and, and as far as explaining to someone what to do, obviously, some of these properties may be rental properties, that kinda thing. So we would absolutely provide them with the actual names of, addresses of who they have to contact. Would the city do that? I mean, that's what I'm wondering. As, I don't think everybody there is a resident.
Here's the list.
Okay, all right. So they would be able to have the list.
Okay, so you have a resolution in front of you this evening. You've heard comments from the public. I'm of the opinion that we need to decide whether we're moving forward with this project or we're not tonight. We've spent roughly a year monkeying with it, preparing numbers and been talking about it a long time. So let's act, one way or the other. Council, what would you like to do?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to proceed with the project with the paving as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian, to approve the resolution regarding the Lafayette Herman
Mr. Mayor, could we just amend that motion to say adopt the resolution?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Well, if you wanted to be precise, I didn't see, I didn't see a resolution here.
Did, uh, we had some, didn't we have a
I would amend that to adopt the resolution that is presented.
Thank you.
If that is better.
I never do the Brian, would you amend your second?
Yes, second.
Okay, so we have a motion by CR and a second by Brian to adopt the resolution concerning the Lafayette Herman project as presented. Further discussion?
I found the resolution. Thank you. I, I'm gonna support this proposition. I, there, there are no winners. I think in the long run, it's, it's a wonderful project. Those that are opposed to it have the opportunity to get enough people to sign to try to get this thing in the protest arena. But I, I, I understand both sides, but I think it's, it's time to vote.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Five to one. Move on to item number 11, which is a boundary declaration for 2017.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna briefly mention that we typically do this at the end of the year. It's, it's just a housekeeping thing that we have to do. And typically, it happens when we've added property to the city. Staff forgot that we added South Andover Road. That, that's not typical of what we deal with these boundary resolutions. We would like to get this done, even though it wasn't done in time, and make sure that we have this added so we don't forget that we, somewhere along the line, decided to own that road if we wanna put it within our boundaries. You can add anything you want to that, Steve, but I just wanted to make sure we understood.
Yeah, could we just maybe call this the February 2018 Boundary Declaration and kinda forget that misstep? Sorry about that. This is a legal requirement. It, the legal description has been amended and is submitted for your consideration if there was
It happened right before the holidays, so you get, you get a one-time pass.
That is one heck of a legal description, by the way.
Could you read it?
No, but I was gonna say, if there was ever anything in your packets that you shouldn't read, do not read the boundary legal description, please. Just look at the map. That's all you need to know. We have South Andover Road now in the city.
Council, you need to make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution declaring the legal boundaries of the city of Andover for 2018 and to authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Greg, second by Mike, to adopt the resolution.
Sorry, it's 2017.
Declaring the, that's what I heard. Declaring the legal boundaries of the city of Andover for 2017 and authorize the mayor to sign. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, Prairie Creek Phase 3.
This plat is north and east of the intersection of Prairie Creek Road and 13th Street North. The plat's been approved. We've put in most of the water and sewer. Most of the earth grading's complete, and it's time to bid the streets. This is a required improvement under our subdivision regulations. The engineer is Baughman Company. They prepared the plat and the other plans. So they have completed work on the streets and want authorization to bid the project and acceptance of the plans.
Concerning paving only, right? Hello?
Pardon me?
It, it's concerning paving only, right?
Paving only, yes. Internal streets, yes.
I would love a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the paving plans and authorize the bidding of paving improvements for Prairie Creek Phase 3. Second.
Motion by CR, second by Greg, Greg, excuse me, to approve the pa, paving plans and authorize the bids for Prairie Creek Phase, Phase 3. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.2. The 13th Street paving petition and map. So I'm trying to understand that we don't really have valid petitions here for this?
I'd be glad to let the bond council and city attorney explain it, but yes, we're somewhat in the same situation we were a couple items ago on how we're gonna go forth with this. We, we, well, I'll just let you I'll let you just tell them that we didn't receive a va-
This petition doesn't meet the requirements for having the valid number of signatures required for this project.
So it's less than 51?
It's 50%.
It's, it's not, it's not just, it's not just that. This petition says that it's signed by the owners of 100% of the real property. And we can go into detail why that, why you would want that to be the case here. But the petition itself says that it's signed by owners of record of 100% of the real property, and it is not. So you, you, you are not eligible to accept this petition in its current form.
Mr.
Go ahead.
Hey, Phil, would you come up to the podium?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, he's here to explain the project.
Yes, sir.
So, explain the project and explain what your take is on this petition for 13th Street paving.
Our attempt to submit this petition is just to
Our attempt to submit this petition is just to, uh, bring some clarity to this in the end, but start a conversation with city council because we're not sure where to go. And so.
Explain the project.
Submitted the petition, so I'm not exactly sure where to start, but we'll see what we can do here. I don't know if that's gonna work for you guys if I.
Well, we're trying to pave Thirteenth Street.
So we gotta pave Thirteenth Street and you have a petition in your possession right now that paves Thirteenth Street from the end of pavement to the east line of the plat. I believe that city staff is gonna tell you that petition that you hold in your possession is stale. Um, I think they're also going to tell you from conversations we've had with them that that petition you have right now assessed a two-hundred-foot strip along the south side of Thirteenth and that approach is not acceptable today. It was acceptable when it was originally prepared. Plus, I don't remember the date, but I want to say two thousand five, two thousand seven, somewhere in that range. We'll go with seven for the moment, but they're, they're over ten years old today. So we believe they're stale. Uh, the developer, Mr. Kelsey, is getting ready to start Phase Three of this. And once we start selling those lots in the next two or three months, we're gonna lose property that we could put into a paving petition. So our goal is to figure out if we need to supply the city a new paving petition for Thirteenth Street, for the remainder of Thirteenth Street that's shown in your yellow. We want to present that to you now before we start selling lots. And so, we have several approaches with state statute to be able to pave Thirteenth Street. One is, um, we split the petition fifty-fifty, assessed it to all of the remaining ground that the developer had to the north. So he has a majority of the area of the petition.
Is that platted or unplatted ground?
It's unplatted with, with the exception of the Phase Three. It's the one platted piece and then there are two unplatted pieces. One in between Phase Three and Thirteenth Street and one that sits to the north that is unplatted. So we're gonna assess all the rest of his ground for the cost of Thirteenth Street and then half to the property to the south.
But you don't have signed petitions from the property owners to the south?
We do not. And we have not been to visit them. I will, I will tell you that now because that's gonna be one of the questions. Not opposed to that? I think we know the answer. Yeah, we'll go ask the question if you want. We think they're gonna say no. We're, we're really trying to figure out what council's thoughts is on paving requirements for this stretch of Thirteenth and who should be responsible.
Well, before we get to our thoughts, I would like to know our options. If any.
I'm proposing, and JT can certainly talk about this, is that we use the same procedure we just used. I know there'd be some variations to that and, uh, assess the property across the street on a linear foot basis and assess the property that, uh, Mr. Kelsey owns on a linear foot basis. Possibly look at a respread later when the development, uh, occurs. But go through the process we just went through. Because by my logic, which I know is very popular amongst this council right now, the special assessments, they don't have enough, the, the property across the street can't stop the project. It's, uh, only able to protest with fifty percent of the landowners. So we have one landowner wanting the project and another landowner not wanting the project. In addition, you'll remember that everybody else along Thirteenth Street had to pay an assessment when that street went in. So if we were to go out there, if we're to extend this street, I think it's only fair that this property owner across the street has to pay an assessment on it. Uh, what that has to wind up being, I think, is another discussion. But if we're gonna have this development occur, it sounds like the extension of Thirteenth Street is a necessity. And really, I think you're, probably bond counsel would tell you there's really no way legally not to assess the people because they're benefiting. Um, and so that's my solution to this problem. I'm certain, but I wanted to bring it to the council before we, uh, went too far with it.
Okay, so we cannot just accept a petition that says that. We have to go through a drawn-out process which includes a public hearing and a resolution and everything that we just discussed earlier tonight for the Herman Street project, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. But I also wish to say that you cannot spread the special assessments as proposed in this petition by doing it through the public hearing process, in my opinion. Would you, would you care if I explained?
Okay.
The petition we have received is for the area that I'm going to trace with this laser and Phil can correct me if I'm wrong. But the benefit district would be this entire area that I am outlining right now, including this tract, unplatted tract up here, this area here, this area here, and this area down here. Is that the petition we in fact received?
Yes, I concur with his outline.
They have then in the petition elected a unstated basis of a fractional basis for assessing those special assessments where they would assess two hundred and fifty-five hundredths against this property and the remaining two hundred and fifty-five hundredths against this property. With the property which is being platted, this is the area you would start now, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the suggestion is, is that this unplatted tract, U-A-two, this parcel right here.
Yes, sir.
Would pay seventeen-five hundredths. And that this parcel being platted would pay twenty-two-five hundredths. And the remaining assessments of one hundred and ninety-eight-five hundredths would be assessed against this unplatted tract with half of the total assessments being assessed against this tract. I do not, I, I, I do not believe I can render my unqualified legal opinion on a public hearing procedure that would assess the assessments on that basis. So I just wanted to be clear that what the city administrator is proposing is that you would simply assess the, you would simply assess through your public hearing these improvements on a linear front foot basis against who.
Yeah.
Who, who would have them. And, and that would mean that this property, that the, the, the properties adjacent to the road here would pay their linear front foot basis, that this would pay its linear front foot basis and this would pay its linear front foot basis. You could also do it on a square foot basis to adjacent property. You could also do it on a valuation basis under the statute. Yes.
If we did it on a linear foot basis, it would be your intention to, obviously your unplatted tract there, the A-two or whatever you're calling that, is way more linear feet than your, um, third phase there. Would be your intention to move some of that linear foot assessment to Phase Three where you have, where you have, um, improvements there that can pay for it?
Yeah, so our, our intent was a fifty-fifty split. And so five hundred fractions is what we came up with, two fifty to the north, two fifty to the south. Only thing that I would correct that JT said, and I think it was a little bit of math. We have, uh, not twenty-two lots, but we have thirty-five lots in Phase Three. So all we're, and then I agree with the seventeen lots here, that's Phase Four, we'll call it, next phase. So we're trying, the fractions are there to hit lot counts. Future lot counts is the reasons or fractions so that they balance out and all of our lots have the same specials.
Oh, I'm sorry. So it sounds, I'm sorry. So it sounds like what you're trying to do is spread the specials to the future PUD or the future homes that are gonna go in there. So I guess I.
Evenly, spread them evenly.
Could, okay, so I, I, I see what you're trying to do. It makes it crazy for us, I think, when it's pretty obvious that the north half pays half and the bottom half pays half and done. And then, but don't you have the opportunity, and maybe I'm wrong in this, with, uh, the homes that you do put in, to spread the specials anyway when you sell the lots?
You know, we'll be glad to work with staff on however it works best, our intent's the fifty-fifty. Um, we could do it on a square foot basis and then you're left doing a lot of respreads, which we want to try to avoid respreads per lot because every lot's a different size, it gets complicated.
Do we have to respread it? Or is that not just part of the price of the lot?
You would as those lots got developed. Yeah, I mean, that, that would be a nightmare, but.
Are you saying we could avoid that with the linear foot analysis that you guys are recommending?
I, I think the linear foot's still gonna give us some respread challenges, but we haven't discussed that.
I, I, I have some comments before you, I know what you're gonna say, but, um, here's the deal. Let's call spade a spade. You got development going on the north side of the road. You got a lot of lots that you could, um, assess this to. You only want to pay fifty percent. Now, the city of Andover's policy over the last years is developers pay for main, major portion, if not all, the portion of the road. Now, the south side property, which, what is that, twenty acres there? They, um, huh, forty? Thirty-nine, okay. Um, they're gonna benefit from this road, but they have no housing development over there. And they don't have individual lots that they can assess any, or, you know, certify any special assessments to. It's just gonna be one lot, one landowner, one payment, which is gonna be pretty pricey. So the real question for this council to decide is, do you believe it's a fifty-fifty deal? You believe the developer should pay fifty and this property across the street should pay fifty percent? That's one question. And the second question is if you think that's fair, um, you, we need to proceed. If you don't think that's fair, um, what's your solution? Make the developer pay more? Make the developer pay less? And that's what we're talking about.
Clear, can we do that legally? That's, I just want to, you know, in terms of putting more onto the developer, um.
I'm sorry, I precisely asked the question because I'm not sure I understand it.
Well, the mayor's asking, can we put seventy percent of the cost onto the developer and thirty percent onto the property to the south?
I didn't, I didn't say that percentage, I just, what are the, what are the legal methods for, for spreading these? There's like three or four, right? Square foot, linear foot?
The, the statute says you can use any reasonable method. And it, before that, it says, uh, my recollection is, I don't have it in front of me, but linear foot, square foot, or appraised value with or without improvements. I, I, I just don't want anybody to say I hit the ball on this. So the question was, can we, can we do this? And I just, I, I just think the legal answer is there is a more significant piece here than just the procedure we started on the Herman addition. And so I'm gonna tell you what I think it is. I don't think the south half of this road is in the city limits. And by law, we're not making an improvement to anything that's not in the city limits, so.
Is that where the pavement ends going east or that entire stretch of Thirteenth Street pavement? From Prairie Creek going east?
I, I'll let staff answer that question because I, I don't know, I, I asked recently.
You just said a piece of that road was not in city limits, which piece?
The south half.
I get it, the south half starting where, east to west?
Huh.
We went back and did a lot of research on those old annexation petitions from over ten years ago. And what we found was that the road right-of-way was specifically excluded on that thirty-nine acre tract.
To the south?
On the south side of Thirteenth Street.
Why would we have done that?
Say that one more time, what was excluded?
The road right-of-way. Who, so it's technically a township road then?
Technically, yes.
Well, we can't do anything anyway.
Well, we don't have the authority to put a road out there, then, no.
I, I don't.
That's right.
It would require annexation of that strip of road right-of-way.
It, it would be, you know, we can unilaterally annex it, right? It's not a question of we have to go to the county or anything else like that to get permission to do that.
It's adjacent to the city limits, it's less than twenty acres, it's completely surrounded by the city limits. But since the mayor asked about the sort of the complicated process of Herman, I wanted you to know that it actually would start earlier than that with annexing it first.
Okay, so that's step one. So let's assume we annexed and get jurisdiction over it and then we can decide what we want to do. Back to, back to my other questions. If we assess fifty percent to the north in various methods, I, I get he's putting it to different places and fifty percent to the south. That doesn't make a valid petition.
Because that'd be fifty-one percent.
Right?
To petition for.
Is that what we're, is that what you're saying? Fifty percent, fifty percent is not a valid submitted petition and we can just summarily act on, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, the question I have then would be if, uh, the south side is not in the city limits and it's over, I think it's the twenty-acre threshold of being forced to, you know, where we can.
We're not annexing the land, just the road right.
We can't assess it either, though.
Can I, can I jump in for a minute, Ben?
Sure.
And I need staff to clarify this for me, but this property is annexed. The twenty acres is annexed. What's not annexed is the half, south half of the right-of-way. The north half of the right-of-way is annexed.
The what? Yeah, I understand.
I didn't realize.
All the right-of-way should probably be annexed right now.
That's weird.
But it's not.
It's, it's a technicality, it's not.
On our current road.
We're not the road.
So previously, when we were down here on this side west of Prairie Creek Road, we assessed all this ground, a two-hundred-foot strip. I think it's gonna get real simple in this conversation for you guys, I hope this simplifies it. Let's say we have four choices. We do a fifty-fifty split, we do seventy percent up here and thirty percent down here. We do eighty percent up here, we do twenty down here, or we just go, it all goes to the north and have a conversation of what, what is fair. Should this property here get a free ride? And I know it's residential use right now, but that's twenty acres that's gonna house forty houses someday in the future.
You said it was thirty-nine acre.
Okay, I'm making, I'm, I'm rounding up numbers for you.
That's what I just said, ten minutes ago. This is a question of fairness.
Yes.
What are you gonna assess to the south, what are you gonna assess to the north? What I'm hearing my staff say is we can't accept your petition the way it is unless it has fifty-one percent and you never gonna have that. Unless you agree to pay for a hundred percent. So, the landowner on the south, whoever that is, of course they're not gonna want to pay anything. But I don't know because the question hadn't been asked.
What, what's the owner's position, what are you recommending?
Well, I don't know how to answer that. And he would be here to answer that tonight if he wa, if he was in town. He happened to be out of town when this got scheduled, so I came. And one of our options may be to defer this so he can come. Of course, he would love the fifty-fifty split. He at least would like a seventy-thirty split because he doesn't think he should bear the entire cost.
I, I don't know of anybody that would think that the other side, south, should get a free ride. And, but you're telling me, uh, I don't know whether you have authority or not, but you're telling the board that your client would, would buy off on the seventy-thirty?
I'm telling you, he would accept that, he would accept that easier than a one-hundred-zero.
But, we would still need a valid petition from the, the landowner to the south that says he'll pay for thirty percent of it.
Or you're gonna have, or we're gonna have to give you a petition that you accept and by state statute can order in. One of the two.
Did you hear that last comment, JT? Is there a method? Is there a method to accomplish this, once we annex the street? If, if we wanted to go fifty-fifty, is there a method to accomplish it?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure because no one has asked me this question before tonight. I was not consulted on the preparation, nor did I review this petition. My opinion was that the petition received is invalid. I am not willing to opine tonight that there is no conceivable possible way to.
That's fair enough.
To do this because that will require a, a, a review of the statutes. And, and assumption has been made tonight.
has been made tonight, I believe by everyone, about the validity of a petition being more than fifty percent based on its adjacency to the road. And I'm not agreeing that's correct. I'm, I, I believe there are bases for a valid petition relating to the benefit district that this engineer and this developer hasn't considered. They didn't, quite frankly, they...
I have an idea.
Have a consultant.
I'm gonna suggest we defer this this evening. Now, I know we just approved paving for phase three, so we need to get on this pretty darn quick.
I need to figure it out before we start selling lots.
Right. So, I suggest we defer this this evening. Let our staff and legal counsel huddle and figure out what we can do and what we can't do, and have some options for the council at the next meeting. And I would suggest Mr. Kelsey be present the next time this is presented, so he can speak for himself. I know yours, I know you're, I know you're the agents.
No, that's perfect.
But if you're okay with that, I would like to punt. Can we defer? Do we need to make a motion to do this, to table it? Right.
I don't think you have to do anything except not vote to accept this petition.
Do we want it to come on the next meeting?
Say that again?
We don't make a motion about it at all.
Okay. We're not making a motion. We're gonna table this, and we'll be in contact.
You can do it indefinitely. That's fine. You don't have to set a...
Well, no, we're not gonna do it indefinitely. I mean, we need to act on this pretty quick. It needs to be decided. I believe we've been talking about this six months? Maybe nine months?
Yes, sir.
We knew it was coming, and now it's here, so we need to figure out what we're gonna do.
I got one, what, quick comment. So, you got a thirty-five lot development. You have a potential fourteen lot development. It's forty-nine lots. You're asking for four hundred and twenty dollars, four hundred and twenty thousand. And you want the guy to the south to pay for thirty or fifty percent. Just a quick numbers, that's eight thousand dollars a lot more on your forty-nine lots, and you got a road paid for.
And we're going north. We're also going...
Unplatted portion.
To, we're going to a larger unplatted portion to the north of pipeline.
Yeah, I think you should buy that thirty-nine acres and call it good. Just do it.
Would be an option.
It's no problem.
Let's defer.
Yep.
Mike, you bring up a, you bring up a valid question is, do we allow developers to assess an unplatted tract of land? And we have in the past, but I think that merits a, a bigger discussion.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Anybody need a break? Okay. Item thirteen, Green Valley Greens twelfth edition. Are you back up?
This item and the next, I'd like to speak together in generalities. They're, they're very, very similar. There's two different subdivisions involved, Green Valley Greens twelfth, and then Cornerstone Office Second. There were two engineers, Baughman Company for the first, MKEC for the second. They were constructed about the same time. We had a single paving contractor low bid on both jobs, Kansas Paving. Both of those projects went way over on time. And so, we handled them both similarly. We deducted the amount of the engineers overrun due to that contractor's excessive time, but we can't transfer that money to the engineer without a formal change in their contract terms. So, this first one, Green Valley Greens, this is the amount of three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. There's been documentation on the withholding from the contractor of actual damages in lieu of liquidated damages. We have had good guidance from our city attorney on this. And so, we would like you to approve this with the understanding that there is some outside chance that the contractor could come back and claim against what we withheld.
I have a question. Why would this money go back to the, to the consultant instead of to us?
When the contractor takes more days to do the job, the inspector spends more time on the job. When we contract for engineering, we have a not-to-exceed amount that allows for a reasonable construction time, and that time becomes unreasonable, the engineer spends more time than he anticipated. So, that triggers that overrun. But neither one of the, the contractor and the engineer are under contract with each other. They're under contract with us. So, we also have a provision under the construction contract to charge them liquidated damages, or those things which he has cost the city of Andover. And what we're saying is that the engineer's overrun is our actual damages.
Okay.
Makes sense?
That makes total sense, yeah.
Plus our time. Plus our time.
Thank you. We didn't put fifteen percent in for that.
That's true. Should be double this, I think.
Need a motion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the amendment to the agreement with Baughman Company for construction engineering services related to Green Valley Greens twelfth edition paving to increase the fees by three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
I'll second.
Motion by Greg, second by CR to approve the amendment as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, Cornerstone Office Second.
Same thing, except at Kansas Engineering, as the consultant in the overrun is in the range of sixteen thousand dollars. Sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. We'd ask for a motion to approve that amount.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the amendment to the agreement with MKEC for the construction engineering services related to the Cornerstone Office Second Edition paving to increase fees by sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Caroline to approve the engineering agreement with MKEC as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, driveway approach.
There's a bump in the fire department exit drive. Been through it, hit bottom. Chief Russell can add to that if he wants. This is a proposal for an engineer to survey, investigate utilities, drainage, design, and administer construction to the not-to-exceed amount of seventy-nine hundred bucks.
Is it a problem?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it is. We've actually had damage to trucks because of this. It wasn't a damage where we had a driver going too fast. It was repeated twisting of the frames as they go out onto Andover Road has actually caused three of our tanks to have leaks in them. The companies have stood behind the leaks and fixed them, but we're clearly having damage to the trucks because of the...
Because of chassis flexing?
Yeah, the, those long trucks, as they come out and they make this twist as we're turning to get into the lane of traffic, it actually twists in three sections. The frame is a solid frame, so the entire frame is twisting. An example would be the large tank sits in the back of the engine behind the cabinets, and there's rails under there just like would be under your house. The rails set down on the frame, but there's rubber padding between there.
Bushings?
Yep. These frames are twisting so much that when we found the big leak, it wasn't hard to find. It was a waterfall coming out of engine one, the rubber bushings had actually completely slid out. So, we said, holy cow, what caused this? And as we went through our analysis, we figured out that that's what's causing it, is the twisting of the frames.
Does this, I know you and I had a previous conversation about being able to safely enter and exit the fire department property there. Does this agreement include any look at traffic, stoppage, or lights, or stripes, or anything on the road of that nature?
Not in this agreement, no.
Not in this agreement? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I will move to approve the proposal for ASM Engineering for the design, construction engineering for reconstruction of the fire department drive-through on an amount not to exceed seventy, seven thousand nine hundred dollars and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Greg to approve the proposal as presented. Further discussion.
I, I just want to make one comment. I, I have complained about that particular issue for years, and it, it just gets worse as time goes along. It, it is time to try to figure something out. And we'll worry about the...
Well, this isn't, this isn't a cost for repairing the problem. This is just a cost for engineering analysis, correct?
Right, to give us a solution to repair it.
Right.
Where's the money coming from?
Street fund? I would take it from the street sales tax fund, but I believe it's a street issue.
All right. We got a motion by CR and a second by Greg. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, somebody to be so kind as to call an executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to KSA seventy-five, forty-third, forty-three nineteen B subsection two for fifteen minutes, to include the governing body, the city attorney, and the city administrator.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion. Can I throw an extra five minutes on that, though, for those of us that might need to use the restroom? Thank you. Sorry.
No, but we can take a five-minute break if you want.
That'll work.
Twenty minutes?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead. That was your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Troy, a second by Caroline to go in executive session to discuss potential litigation for twenty minutes, to include the governing body, the city administrator, and the city attorney. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion by C.R., a second by Greg, come out of executive session. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're back in regular session, but we do have another executive session. I would like somebody to call for approximately ten minutes, uh, discuss potential litigation to include the governing body, the city administrator, the city attorney, and the public works, well, zoning administrator. How about that?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, motion by Caroline, a second by Brian, to go in executive session to discuss potential litigation for approximately ten minutes, uh, to include the governing body, the city administrator, the city attorney, and director of public works. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So moved.
Motion by Troy, second by Brian, to come out of executive session. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I believe we're down to member items. Brian, would you like to start us off?
I don't have anything.
I have no item.
Troy.
No items tonight.
C R.
I passed.
Hey.
I have nothing.
Mike.
Happy Mardi Gras day.
Happy what?
Mardi Gras.
Oh.
Mardi Gras. Staff have anything else?
Want to make sure that we have the count on who's going to the Chamber of Commerce at dinner. I think you've got all this so far, but that's Thursday.
What time again?
Five thirty, Crespi Country Club, Social Security Department.
Anything else? Let's get out of here.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.